It is Monday, October 24, 2016 at 5:00 PM. This is a meeting of the Oregon Village Board. I'd like to call it to order and request roll call, please.
Bollig.
Here.
Brethauer.
Here.
Udrow.
Here.
Carpenter.
Here.
Grineer.
Here.
Here, thank you. So, item three is public appearances. A, under that, in response to the village's $690,000 offer to purchase, the board discussion with owners of former Methodist Church property regarding their counterproposal of $860,000 contingent upon other terms acceptable to the sellers and closing prior to December 31, 2016. So, tell them if you want to come to the microphones and we can have that discussion and then we'll go to items B through D.
And Steve, I mainly put this on your, so that maybe if Robin wants to explain his methodology and...
Yeah, great, thank you. Welcome, Robin.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mike, did everyone see my email?
They have it, yes.
So, I'll just quickly run through those five points and then I have one other item which helps with the valuation of the property. Number one, we had the recent accepted offer. That was about 15 months ago and you're all aware of that. There was an appraisal. I think you'd asked about an appraisal last time. I did dig up the old appraisal from 2009. If anyone wants to see that, I have that with me. That was for million 2050. I did have a discussion with that same appraiser and asked him what he thought a revaluation would be and he said, "Well, it would be based on the use." So, it's hard to do an appraisal unless you know what the use of the property is. And so, he gave me the 12,000 to 15,000 per unit if it was apartments, which was one of the uses discussed. And so, that valuation, just using the information that he gave me, came out just a little, about a million dollars. And then, we looked at the Dane County land sales over the last 12 months, just as a guideline. And there was, the closest comp in that listing was a 2.45 acre property, I believe it was out by Bergamon, that sold for about 2.69 times the assessed value, which happens often in this sort of real estate. The other piece of information that I want to share... Marshall, would you hand this around? There's a really good comp that's underway right now here on Jefferson Street. An acre and a half parcel that I understand the sale price is a million dollars. And they're looking at putting about 60 units on that parcel. So, again, a comparable use. And so, I just did quickly a little land use comparison and just looked at what that cost was. 1.5 acres, approximately 65,000 square feet of property. The proposed use there is apartments. That purchase price for a million dollars relates to about $15.30 per square foot for that piece of real estate. They also have to demolish and remove about five buildings there, five structures. The proposed price that we have offered on a 2.71 acre site calculates out to about $7.28 a square foot, so less than half of the price of a comparable, very recent transaction that's currently pending. So, just doing the math, if we were to use that cost per square foot on the parcel, the church parcel, it would come out to about a million eight, a little over a million eight, which ironically is about what we have in it, but I know that has nothing to do with anything today. So, I just wanted to give you as much information as I could gather to help with value on the property. Marshall and I have offered to take 125,000 off the purchase price. We really want something that works for Village of Oregon. We're actually kind of excited about the potential of the library going there, saving the big oak trees, all of those things. And so, that's why we made the offer that we did, but we both feel that we're somewhat underpriced on the value of the property. Any questions?
Any questions for Robin?
Just a comment, I want to thank you for all the work you're doing. But that's the best thing you can do, is give us information. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, so, I'll read B through D and we'll go to those. B is general discussion possible action by board regarding civic campus plan and possibly acquiring former Methodist Church property. The next one goes on, it's also action for possible soil borings. And then, item D mentions that we're going to close session at the end of this meeting to talk about this in more detail. With an update at the meeting on November 14, which is our next meeting. So, any other comments at this time anyone wishes to make? Anything in regard to item B? Looks like there's not. So, let's do item C. Anything from staff at this time?
I know this has been talked about, about having us, particularly Jeff getting soil borings and before we can actually get a proposal from someone, we have to make sure we know where, which, where we want to do it.
Yeah, that's what you're doing.
Yeah, I always hope. So, we certainly need it for, Rachel, for the senior center lot, library lot.
As, in the library and the library part.
And then, I know Jerry's been talking about...
Yeah, there's a site that I kind of have my eye on.
JC Park West, right?
JC Park West, possibly for a senior center location.
Yeah.
If we decide not to move to other...
Okay.
And I put, oh, sorry.
And it's, if you're familiar with the property, it's on the east side of Oak Street. There are like four maple trees now that are about the size, you could move them. And if, you probably couldn't put a basement there, but you could, you know, depending on what the soil borings would show, you might be able to build a two-story building. I don't know if you need one, though, with the ample room that's available there. So, and the current senior center is on a slab, so.
Yep.
So, if we could do borings there, it'd just be interesting to see what that soil over there would support. It's such a nice location, there's already a parking lot there.
Sure, just to confirm, you're talking about the area that is west of the concrete channel, between the concrete channel and the roadway?
No, it's east, it's on the east side of Oak Street.
Oak Street.
But it's the west side of the channel, yeah.
Yes, west of the channel and then bordered by the parking lot down to the channel to the south.
Right, I mean, you wouldn't, you wouldn't need all that, I assume, but you'd need, you'd need room for another parking lot minimally and then you'd have to determine the size of the building.
Okay.
I don't know that it would be enough for a library, though, or even support a library.
I put the Methodist Church property in there, if, but I know Mike Slavvy would say that that's not needed, right, Mike, for doing soil borings?
I think it's the highest and driest spot of the...
Yeah, so, I would say it'd probably be a waste of money to do it, or not.
Well, why don't you check and see how much it would cost? And then, we can decide that, at least.
Okay, we can get that as part of the proposal.
Okay.
As an alternate. Would be, get the owners permission then to...
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, why not?
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Rob.
We did some soil testing there over the years, just for, mainly for checking out what was there. We didn't actually do structural engineered soil borings, but there were, there was some testing down there. And it's, as you said, it's as good a soil there as you would expect.
Yeah, okay. When you say soil testing, you mean like chemical, chemical type soil testing?
Yeah, we had asbestos dust on and there was a phase one, we didn't actually do a phase two, but we did, there were a couple different explorations down there and I don't remember specifically what they were for, but everything, they all came up negative.
No dry cleaners or anything?
No, no.
That's good.
Okay, thank you.
So, we need a motion on...
You would, yeah, we'll come back with a proposal then.
We need a motion on this, right?
So moved.
Yes, please.
I'll second that.
And that's for all of those, is that right?
Yes.
All listed, okay.
Yes.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, motion curious.
Thank you.
And we'll have that broken out as a site specific, so that you can then do poll card.
Yeah, okay, thank you. So, again, item D mentions we're going to go into closed session at the end of the meeting and we'll adjourn from that closed session and we'll have an update at the meeting, next meeting, which is November 14. So, there's no meeting on the 7th because of the election this room the next day. So, we're at November 14 on that. Okay, we'll go to item four, approval of vouchers. We have vouchers tonight in the amount of 294,254.61 for approval.
So moved.
Second.
And I do have a question. Can you tell me what the rest of the category is called, that 9225 Wisconsin Court Fines and Assessments, September Penalty? It's underneath Weaver Auto Parts.
September Penalty?
Yeah.
I don't think the report's in here. That's the...
It's a court.
I think those are just like the fines that people are paying and that we have to turn around and a portion of it goes for all these different categories. If it was an OWI, I think those are just like probably regular...
We turn, we turn over the state, that money, right?
Yes, yeah.
So, it just passes through?
Yeah, we keep a portion of it and then the majority of it goes on through.
Thank you.
Other questions on the vouchers? Okay, again, we have motion, a second, to approve vouchers in the amount of 294,254.61. Roll call, please.
Staton.
Yes.
Grineer.
Yes.
Carpenter.
Yes.
Brethauer.
Yes.
Udrow.
Yes.
Bollig.
Yes.
Thank you. Item five, there's a note from the village administrator for our next agenda item, which is community input, that has been amended to let speakers know they have three minutes to address the board. So, item six, community input, is there anyone who would like to address the board at this time? Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Stark Traxler, 277 North Main Street on, right here in Oregon. Anyways, I'm just speaking in behalf of all the neighbors here. We just want to let you know that we greatly appreciate you including us in these meetings and that we would really like to see a purchase if we could, you know, with the village to purchase a property and whatever you guys have intended to put there would be fantastic.
Good.
Thank you, Stark.
Thanks, Jeff.
We know you're quite interested.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we've got item seven, proclamations, oops, I'm sorry.
Speak on this?
Well, community input is whatever you choose to talk, you've got three minutes.
Kermit Traska, 116 West Lincoln Street, Oregon. And I'd speak in favor of the board approving the purchase of the former Methodist Church property, but I think on one condition, that you pay the fair market value. And that would be understanding that there are two structures that need to be demolished at great expense, quite a bit of land forming that needs to be done. And the only thing worse than putting the wrong thing there is paying too much for it. Having worked for the DNR and doing land purchasing for them, it was always at fair market value with three appraisals, so that you saw the actual value of the land that you were purchasing. So, I think it's important that you pay a fair price, but that be the fair market value and not be, in essence, bullied into figure on something that might be developed there in the future.
Thanks. And I can tell you, the owners have not been bullies at all, so they've been good to work with.
Okay.
That's not been an issue at all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, now we'll go to seven, proclamation announcements, board comments.
Yes, I have a comment. Today, I was surprised with a, I have EMS shirt that they're doing for breast cancer and one of the EMS people came to my house to give it back to me. And also, in regards, they are going to be sending money in my name to the UW Carbone Cancer for research. I was very pleased and thank you very much.
Thanks for sharing.
Sure.
Yes, we're almost at the end of another growing season here and I didn't want too much time to pass without thanking the crew that's been maintaining the flowers downtown through, through Main Street. I think it's, Mike, help me out here, it's Gary Deesh, his wife.
I don't want to start naming names, because there's seven people involved. We, we sent them a gift card and Steve is actually sending them a thank you card.
Okay, well, I want to thank the seven people, because they did a bang-up job and it looked wonderful.
But it is Gary and some of, I think it's his granddaughter and some other, other friends.
Right, so, I'll just want to, a blanket thank you to all those people concerned.
Yeah, good, thanks, Jeff. And there was an article in The Observer about that also, which was nice, so, a while there, so, good, thank you. Jeff?
So, Judy commented that November 12, we're going to be hanging Christmas lights and everybody should come down to Bergy Jewelry at 7:30 and grab a ladder.
Thank you, Jeff.
You're welcome, Judy.
Okay, anyone else?
Oh, in that same respect, we were putting, putting the light bulbs into the lights that week, so if anybody has some extra time, they can come down to the Public Works Department and help us do that.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so, item B, staff comments, Mike?
So, the next meeting, as you've said a few times, the 14th of November.
We all have it, no?
Yeah, next two Mondays you have off, I think.
Well, that's the first.
No, those are special Mondays.
I always say, well, tonight's special, too, Jeff.
It's not as special as those two.
Okay.
Just a, just a differentiation for you, see?
Regular versus special, I know.
Okay, we've got item eight, communication and miscellaneous business. For information only, Rob Keynes has designed for the park board and we are accepting applications for that vacant position and a vacant alternate position and they can contact Mr. Grace for the paperwork to fill out. Item B, discussion possible action on dog park mowing and other issues. So, recommend a motion here to refer the Director of Public Works memorandum to the park board for the park board's November 9 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. That was quick. Jeff, you want to go through that at all?
Yeah, just a little bit here to talk about. We've received some recent complaints and some concerns on, on social media as well as other areas concerning some of the issues down at the dog park and primarily some concerns over dog waste in the park, some of the muddy entrances, some of the gates that needed to be adjusted, as well as mowing and then a reoccurring problem with some thistles in the area. Basically, you know, this is, this is a very, very low land area. It's very, very high organic soils, the blackest soils you've ever seen in your life. If you go down there and start digging around, it is literally the color of these, these boardroom chairs. It is difficult to grow on and I think our, our guys have done a really nice job. They've paid a lot of attention to it, at least getting the grass growing, but the other amenities, we really have not been able to put as much time in on. And also, killing the thistles has been a very challenging process. So, what I was recommending and what I wrote to this is the referral back to the park board for a plan that would, kind of a five, five or six step plan, what do we have here? The increased application of herbicide in the next year. And when we do apply herbicide, we will be notifying and then also signing the dog parks as closed for a period of days to allow it to be safe for the animals. You might notice that we've actually gone ahead and started to put some gravel area at the small dog, dog park area and they were supposed to be down there resetting some of the fence today. I've not had a chance to go down and take a look at that. We also have several old fire hydrants laying around the back of the public works garage. I've instructed that those be installed kind of in the park for, and painted a black and orange for Oregon. We can't have them red, because that would mean they're active. But just something for the dogs to sniff and do whatever they want to do with them. And then, we have some green dog waste receptacles that we want to mount that we have down in the public works garage. Placement of several picnic tables at the entrance way, possibly consider concrete pads in those, although on those soils, it'll be a little tricky. Repair and adjustment to the gates is what's ongoing right now. And then, the modified mowing plan for both dog parks. Primarily, I know some of the concern, and I think it's justified, is that, you know, mowing the entire 11 acres or whatever we have out there is, is a little too much. So, looking at keeping the small dog park area mowed fairly short for the small dogs and small legs. And then, the large dog park having an open space for running, run area, as well as allow some of it to grow longer grasses and with mowed paths through there, kept at a manageable level. We've had some concern from individuals, as far as when you purchase a dog park pass, it's $20 right now annually. That way, if someone, and that runs a calendar year from January 1st to December 31st, there have been some requests that they, we do kind of a prorated plan. I don't want to get crazy with it, but I am recommending a, a kind of a, if you pay after the half portion of the year, that would be $10 for the remainder of that year. We want to encourage people to buy dog park passes. Some people have asked for a refund and we've kind of dealt with those on a case-by-case basis. But we think that if we can make some improvements down there and if they see those improvements being made, I think we'll see some additional interest in the dog park. But summary, it's a very challenging area. I've received a lot of phone calls on it and hopefully, this is going to help stem some of those.
Yeah, looks like a good plan to make, yeah. So, any discussion questions over here? Okay, so, we have a motion, second, to refer Jeff's memo to the park board for their November 9 meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion curious, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Jeff. Item C, discussion possible action on reconfiguration of police department building gutter system. So, recommend a motion to accept the proposal from Pioneer Roofing dated September 15, 2016, in the amount of $9,837 for the reconfiguration of a portion of gutter at the police building and relocation of the downspout to a landscape area that would come from the 2016 borrowing. So, we need a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
So, I have a question. What would happen if you just deadheaded that gutter downspout at the, at the soffit? If you just closed it and sealed it up?
I don't think we have another one in the area that's, so I think it would just sit up there and freeze. The design, as you can see on, in your packet on page two, you can see where the downspout comes down, comes down actually right in front of a handicap parking stall, as, as well as right at a ramp. This has been a nuisance for, how many years, how many, 2000?
15.
Way before me. 15 years, 15 years it's been a nuisance.
We tried numerous things.
We, we have battled it year after year, apparently with a snow melt. We've tried putting in...
Electric coils.
Electric coils and the problem is, is that drains, it melts the water and the ice, melts the ice, but then the water goes onto the pavement and freezes. We've had several people fall out there and this has just kind of been one of those ongoing things that we have to take care of. We did receive two proposals and they're in your packet there. One proposal, I actually recommended taking the water and running it through a storeroom in the building and then out the other side. I actually do not like that idea at all. I think with this building and the history that we have had with it, I don't want to be routing storm water into the building at all.
Who, who built the building?
Myron.
Who?
Myron Construction.
Have we approached them at all? I mean, between finding out that they didn't insulate in the ceiling and now, I mean, honestly, you've been looking at it for 15 years, but their engineering puts the downspout on a handicap ramp off a sidewalk? I mean, have we, have we asked them for a bid? I mean, I understand it would cost us money, but isn't their reputation worth something, too?
Well, we spent probably five or six, seven years after the building built, going to mediation arbitration with them over various things, including the heating and air conditioning and everything, so we haven't, we haven't been back to them quite some time about the building. So, you're saying we should be contacting them?
Well, I just, that $9,900, it's a big number and I understand it's commercial earned, but...
They would, what they would say, I mean, we could do that, but they would say it's Verbeckers' fault who designed the building. That, that was a constant thing going back and forth between the architect and Myron. And we had many, many meetings with them and about many, many issues with the building. Unfortunately, that's what happens sometimes when you, you know all this, you set, you do a little bid and that's what you get sometimes, unfortunately.
I asked the question, you gave me the answer, so, there we go.
Okay, good. Okay. Jeff?
Yes, I have a question for Jeff. Jeff, you reviewed this, I assume?
Yes, absolutely.
Does that seem, you know, I kind of feel the same as Jeff, that it's an awful big number?
Actually, I was gonna, yeah, I was gonna reference that a little bit.
And if you weigh in a little bit on...
Well, unfortunately, this is, this part of the building design is an internal gutter system. And the internal gutter system means that you do not see the gutter. If you went up there, you would actually see a structure built out away from the gutter and the gutter is hidden and behind this, is it the soffit or the fascia? Which is the vertical? Fascia, thank you. Hidden behind the fascia. And so, it's not just like putting a new gutter on and resloping it, it's actually you have to pull that whole part out, rebuild the gutter, reslope it and, and actually direct it to the south and then east over to our landscape area over there on the east side, or the south side of the building. No, this is actually about where I figured it would be. I figured when we looked at this last winter, I remember thinking it's not going to be a very cheap fix. However, I will bring to your attention the Keller proposal. When I've talked to the individuals who put this together and they were routing this through, depending on if we were to use PVC pipe, it would be about 11,500 and change. If we were to use noise reduction and install cast iron piping, which is a much heavier piping, and of course, you don't hear it running through the walls, that would add another $8,400. So, the price that we did receive from the other proposal was almost $19,000 if you do all their options.
And I'll do it for 100,000, so now you've got three bids.
I got three.
And it's like, it's like $90,000 less than my bid.
Right. Is it still expensive? Absolutely. But we also have had a very challenging, I guess, how long have we been looking at numbers for this?
Well, as I say, Dale Burke, when Dale was here, he, he could not find a company even to put a bid in. I mean, nobody, nobody wants to touch the building. Well, I shouldn't say now we have these two proposals, but it was hard finding companies to bid on.
Yeah, it's been pretty much since we started.
And I should say that when, when Mark was here and we repaved the, the parking lot a couple of years ago, he tried his darndest to try to get the water to, to pitch away from the building, but it, there isn't just enough of a pitch to get the water to run to the south, so that wasn't the answer. We thought maybe the answer is when we repaved the parking lot, we could do something, but we couldn't do it, so.
Okay. Last question, I guess, my last question. Jeff, are you satisfied that this will remedy the problem?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Further discussion or questions? Okay, scene nine, we have motion, second, to accept the proposal from Pioneer Roofing, in the amount of $9,837 for reconfiguration of a portion of the gutter at the police building and relocation of the downspout to a landscape area. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion curious, thank you.
Thank you.
Item D, discussion of possible action, hiring Hawkins Ash Auditors for completing Affordable Care Act 1095 forms. Recommend a motion is to approve hiring them for completing those forms for the estimated amount of 950 to 1100.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Lisa?
So, our thought process behind this is last year was the first year we had to do this and that Hawkins were the auditors at the time, so we're just going to continue to use them, because depending on how the election goes, there could be a change. So, we may not, may not have to do it in the future. Instead of buying the software and paying a maintenance fee for it every year, we kind of want to wait and see what happens. But next year, we may buy the software that's provided by Civics and then there's an annual maintenance fee, but it's like twice as much as, more than twice as much as would it be for them to just do this, for us again this year.
Okay, that makes sense. Sorry, Jeff?
Lisa, you've had them do this before?
Last year was the first year that we were required to do it, yes.
Okay, and the price was about the same?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's based on the number of employees.
Okay, all right. And you were happy with the performance and the work?
Yeah, and they asked, and they, also, they changed the due date. Yeah, and they asked, and they, also they changed the due date. Last year was March because it was the first year and this year it's January, so.
Okay.
It needs a much quicker turnaround this year than last year.
Okay, no further questions?
Anyone else?
How much, how much time goes into the preparation of one of the forms? Can you, can you say?
There's a, there's a lot of time that goes into the preparation. If we would only have to issue a few of these, we probably could have done them ourselves and we had, we would have to type the form out because we don't have a program. So that's why we're waiting to see what happens. And if this is going to be a continued thing, then we're going to end up getting the program through Civics and that'll automatically do it for us. But it's $2,500 for the, for that module to be added to our software package and then it's $400 a year maintenance on it. Where this is only going to cost us about, at the most, $1,100. And if we don't have to do it in the future, I feel that we're not wasting any money then that way.
Thank you.
It seems like there'd be a liability for doing it wrong as well, that Hawkins Ash will assume.
Correct, yeah, and they've got a special, they've got the special program. We send them the information and they issue the 1095s to all the individuals that need them.
And I'm sure they carry liability insurance like every other accounting firm.
Yes. Any other questions?
Anything else? Anyone? Thanks, Lisa. So we have the motion second to approve hiring Hawkins Ash auditors for completing the Affordable Care Act forms for the amount of $950 to $1,100. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item E, discussion of possible action about approving the 2017 snow plowing policy?
So move. Second. Are there any changes to the policy from the last year, Jeff?
Just some real minor changes. I added some of the newer equipment that we have, including some of the John Deere equipment.
Bucket truck.
Huh?
Bucket truck.
We're not pushing stone with the bucket truck. But, so I added some stuff with that and our new end loader with plow and wing. And then I collected, or corrected a few things. There were some things, references in this to street superintendent and we really don't have that position, so I changed that to director of public works or the assistant director of public works and some minor formatting things. But in general, I did also freshen up the map that's hopefully color on your screens and some, that is, I think, a better map than what we had before. It's a step in the right direction. We'll eventually get to a more of an interactive style map, but that's really about the only changes for this year. We are ready.
I think the big question anyone from the public would have when they hear this subject is, is the routing the same?
Routing is generally the same, yes. We always make very minor tweaks depending on the equipment and personnel that we have available, but in general, the routing will be, the routing and the priority has not changed.
Okay. Would you like to go over the private plowing, which involves the items on page five?
Yeah. Well, of course, we do not ask, we remind people not to push snow or ice into the roadway or into a sidewalk. Pushing or carrying or depositing snow or ice onto a public way is not allowed and the blowing of snow or ice onto pedestrian or vehicle travel area is not allowed as well. It's, it's always tricky. Snow plowing is one of those things that we all know that you get done finishing your driveway and then the snow plow driver comes along and does not intentionally bury your driveway, but the snow has to go somewhere. So we just, it's always kind of one of those things that hopefully we'll have a good snow year, that's not too bad, but you know, the guys are out there working hard and it's a tough job and it's a late, late, late night job usually, so just ask for courteousness as well as care in cleaning your driveways.
Man, that goes both ways, right?
Absolutely.
I mean, because it's just as frustrating for me when I spend an hour clearing my driveway only to have the snow plow driver come through and put, you know, three cubic feet back at the skirt.
Three cubic feet? How about three cubic yards?
Yeah, or that.
Yeah. What, what was your address again?
So I think some of the things that the snow plow drivers can do is drive a little slower, be aware of the pitch of their blade. I mean, there's certain things that they can do to minimize the amount of snow that they put back onto.
Correct.
Driveways and even sidewalks. Sometimes if they come through at a, at an extreme speed and it's happened, they buried my sidewalk in snow.
Hopefully that's not.
They just speed up for you.
They do just speed up.
Speed up for your health, that's it.
Yeah, we let them know where you live.
Thank you. It's purple on the map.
That means go fast.
Yeah.
That means we'll have it cleared after about seven to eight days.
Right.
Anything else, Jeff?
That's all, no, I'm good, thank you. Yeah, I should have quit while I was ahead.
You're a marked man now.
Anything else? We all know to be quiet about snow plowing now. Okay, so we have that motion to approve the snow plowing policy. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion curious, thank you.
Thank you.
Item F, police department's K-9 report. Any comments here, chief? Numbers are there, can be seen online for those watching.
Yeah, I mean, we continue to use the K-9 as much as we can. I think our K-9 officer, Josh Coleman, has done a pretty good job. You can see on the activity report that he's done a couple of board meetings with me on the whole sniff process as well. And we are currently working with the school right now, setting up some dates for our first random dog sniff there.
Will Vandy be the only dog that's used then or will other departments come with dogs?
No, we'll have several, several other departments. I think we're trying to get, we're going to have two K-9s to go to the middle school and we'll probably have around seven, I would imagine, at the high school.
Okay.
Yeah, so we can get it all done in a period, one period.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Curious, and this is probably just going to show my lack of knowledge on the program, but when the dog isn't patrolling or on duty, what's happening to the dog? Is it just at the officer's home?
Yep, yeah, he's housed at the officer's home.
Typing reports.
Yeah.
Part of their family, playing fetch, you know, all that good stuff.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions on the K-9 report? Okay, item G, the police department's school resource officer report?
Any questions on that? You can see Officer Shue has been very busy, has had lots to do. He does a great job of detailing his actions at the schools.
It's a great report and it really is.
Well, again, just like the K-9 report, this is great information to have.
Yeah.
Yeah. We did take care to make sure that the juveniles' names were not in here for public disseminations.
Thank you for that.
Okay, we'll go to item H, local police departments respond to use of course recommendations. Police chief report as back to recommendations issued in February.
Yeah, this was, this was part of Dane County's initiative to work with the NAACP and United Way and leaders of color. This is just some of the recommendations that were put forth by the Chiefs of Police Association, but I don't know if you've had a chance to look at it or not, but most of these recommendations and the requests that were put forward are something that we're already doing and most of the agencies are already doing. So you'll see on ours, I talked a little bit about our willingness to welcome suggestions from the public on ways to strengthen relationships and help with our recruiting efforts. And that was just some of the recommendations that they brought forth. So each agency has got a little bit of a snippet on this press release, but I thought it was nice to, to give an overall progress of what's happening.
Recruitment efforts for employment?
Yes. Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, then we'll go to item I, which is table from the October 17th board meeting. Discussion of possible action, agreement for police department records management system. Chief Yule has updated his PowerPoint and look at slides 14 through 17 in response to questions from the October 17th board meeting. Expected total cost are $166,672. The recommended motion is to approve integrated public safety software purchase agreement with Spillman Technologies for Records Management System in the amount of $129,336.
I'll make that motion for discussion.
Second.
Thank you.
So I understand there were some questions last week that I wasn't here, so I'm certainly happy to answer those questions and before I go into any other information about this, so.
I think I was one of the people that asked questions and I think you've satisfactorily answered them. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
When I saw the figure, when the amount of money showed up, I was a little, I want to be able to explain to people who might see that amount to why it needs to be spent and I, whatever, I better understand that now.
Okay.
And I think I raised the question also, chief. I saw that number and I, I knew it would be reported in the paper, local paper, and I was concerned like Doug, that if I got a question, it's like, geez, what, how did that improve your software and how does it work now? And I went through your PowerPoint here and actually that answered all my questions.
Fantastic. I love putting the work in ahead of time so I don't have to answer.
Is that going to be up, either up on the website or something for information for the public that we could redirect them?
I think we'll do that because I, after you, Jerry, I reread and Doug, I reread Brian's PowerPoint this morning and it really does a good job of explaining why, what the advantage is going. I mean, and we've also had issues with our current system and Brian and I were talking about this today, so, yeah, we'll make a point to put it on the webpage.
The big thing for me was, it was done by someone else before and now it's going to be done by a different vendor and it should be better service.
Yeah, and I can certainly talk a little bit about our current service if you'd like on the issues that we're having with them, but I don't want to delay the meeting any longer, so. If you guys have questions, I'd certainly answer them for you.
Any questions? Okay. So we have the motion second to approve integrated public safety software purchase agreement with Spillman Technologies for the Records Management System in the amount of $129,336. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion curious, thank you. You're all set, chief?
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Item nine, report of committees, there are none. Item 10, minutes not requiring action, we have the library director's report to the village, to the library board, October 2016. That's in the packet for those who are watching, can see it online. Do you need to make any comments on that, Nikki, or is all set?
I might just make one comment, which is to highlight that the library has started holding some community conversations, which are discussions with different groups in the community. The first couple are targeted groups and we're bringing in a consultant from South Central Library System to facilitate those discussions, to get a better feel for what the community feels, our strengths and what ways that we can grow. And then ultimately, the library will try to determine how we might be able to best intersect with that and serve those needs that are as perceived by the public. So the first one was held last week and that was focusing on learning communities and we invited people both from the school district and also other groups as well. We tried to get in, you know, representatives from homeschooling groups, after school or preschool, et cetera. Our next one will hopefully be within the next month and a half and that will be focusing on local leaders and that's very broadly defined. And then our third one, we're hoping, will be open more broadly to the public. There may be additional ones that we would offer at the start of the year as well. So this is just the very beginning of some broader conversations on how we can meet the community's needs.
Yeah, good, thank you. Good idea. And for those watching, I would mention in our packet, you can find online, there's lots of graphs and pie charts and stuff that show use of the library, it's quite interesting to take a look at how that works. Item 11, unfinished business, there is none. Item 12, new business, there is none. 13 future agenda items are listed there. And then item 14, the village board will adjourn in a closed session during the meeting pursuant to Wisconsin statute section 19.851E to discuss villagers' negotiations for the possible acquisition of the former Methodist Church property in pursuant to 19.851F to discuss performance issues of village employee. Final action will not be taken on the employment matter at this meeting and we will adjourn from closed session. Need a motion, please?
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.